I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great work that our mission stands, one nation, united on end of this law, liberty and justice for all.
Looking at our agenda for tonight, we do have an update packet that's on our desks in front of us. One thing to add to it, we did have in our new business, item 10, which is the police department and potential contract with the township. Something that we discussed this morning, Department Head meeting should be on here. Just apparently missed it. So, Chief can give us a little update on that and we're a big stand when we get to that point. I'm gonna put that as a new business and then we'll talk about that when we get there. Right, otherwise, activity reports. We had a budget finance meeting last week. Primary point of conversation there was the purchase of the new squad car, page sixty-five of our agenda. So, I don't want to comment after that, that's been discussed and talked about already. Did have a policies and procedures meeting, we made a lot of progress there. Put through a PTO bank policy that we've been talking about for a while. So, that should be coming to council for approval, along with some other things regarding our bylaws and such should be coming at one of our next meetings. Then, on Thursday of last week, Tarek, Megan and I were down at the Capitol, met with Representative DeMath and Senator Arnold, talked to both of them about some of the things that are going on, expressed that we will be calling on them when time is right with the nature energy stuff. Expressed that it's a little bit too early right now to get too many cooks involved in this kitchen. They both talked to us about their concerns with the statewide Aiden Family Medical EDA Act, not going to belabor those points here, but just to tell you what's, what was on their mind. That's all I have. Neil?
Quite a few. On Thursday, March 2nd, I went to the Highway 23 meeting in London for the expansion of the South End. Found it kinda interesting, they're gonna put an underground walkway light tunnel under the highway by wagon, Bill will be sorted. And we already started cutting trees and they're gonna go to town on that. Mappelitz got the job, I'm not one to. And then Friday and Saturday, I all went to the LMC Advanced Leadership Conference in Alec. And a lot of good topics, wellness, conflicts, resolution, fabric the community. And then, last speaker was very good about influence and played a clapping game, used to be called Catch the Clap, but I guess after the sixth, he's renamed. The guy was good. Had the special council meeting last week, talked about the mayor's job offer, policies, procedures, shunned covered that, and then public works tonight, surge jetting, slow solar lease proposals, irrigation, tires, EDA well number five. Been busy.
Alright, thank you. Megan?
Had the council working session on the sixth, and I went to the Capitol as the mayor mentioned, and then we also, that seemed to add an environmental board meeting, where we mostly talked about the upcoming citywide cleanup and scavenger days.
Thank you.
I also was at the special meeting on the sixth, and I also had a special EDA meeting on the first, and then I also went to the meet and greet for Randy Schaefer for the community foundation.
And how was that?
Good.
Very. The special council meeting, budget and finance, there was actually a deal with Minnesota Cities. And then, last Thursday, I talked to Jesper Nielsen about some things with nature energy, and he's gonna be meeting with us tomorrow.
Great. Onto our Department Head reports on Ron.
Well, thank you. First of all, residents are invited, you can still get their park reservations, currently I think we have close to twenty of them out for this coming year. So, it's a very good start. Also, please keep your sidewalks clean, I know this is a tough time of year, but if you don't, it does get very slippery out there. Parking regulations change on the fifteenth, so after that point, we will need to declare a snow emergency when we plow. I attended the Minnesota River Water Annual Conference in St. Cloud, that is getting bigger every year. This year, they had over eleven hundred attendees, and I think it was over four hundred vendors there. So, it is actually, it's huge. Some of the highlights, just expanding off the lead copper rule, by October of 2024, we do need to have a inventory completed of all lead service lines, which now they also have included galvanized lines. And one of the good parts is, they said, "Don't rush out, get started," because there is gonna be grants available to complete this, which is a good thing. On the galvanized line, the majority of that, we're probably gonna have several hundred of those, it's gonna all be on the private side, and the way it's looking, there will be grants available for help residents replace that also. Long-term planning, there was a session there on how much should we be of our depreciation schedule, should we be putting in our reserves? Communities are kind of all over the board, some of them are actually a hundred percent of your depreciation schedule, they're putting into reserve funds. We're not nowhere close to a hundred percent, we're probably closer to thirty percent. So, PFAS is always on the agendas these days, you'll see more of that. Manganese, Department of Health, that may become a primary instead of a secondary contaminant. That'll be on the radar. Also, water treatment optimization, years back and for many years, you never heard of biological active filters, that was biological activity is something you see strictly in wastewater and other things. That has taken a big turn, just about every plant being designed these days seems like it adds some kind of biologically active filter in front of it. And goes through that, and then through the normal filter. So, it was a very good conference, and, thank you.
Any questions for Ron? Things are on Tarek.
Alright, well, as Sean and Megan mentioned, we all went to the legislative session down in St. Paul last Thursday. Also attended the special council meeting, environmental board, public works just now, policies and procedures. Jean and I had the EDA sub-finance committee to discuss Avon Plastics, which we'll be discussing later today. And in budget and finance, two of the highlights there is we discussed DDA's proposal to reduce the amount of grades we have in our wages from twenty down to eleven. However, after reviewing the costs associated with it, the board decided not to pursue that and to just continue as we are now, because everything seems to be working fine, so why change it and have to add a cost to it? And then, we also discussed the new squad, which of course is also on the agenda today, and we'll be discussing that one in detail.
Any questions for Tarek? Great, thank you. Anybody here for the public work? Moving on then to the adoption of the consent agenda, includes the minutes from our city council and EDA meeting, along with the vouchers and the update totaling two hundred ten thousand nine hundred ten dollars and eighty cents. At this time, a motion to adopt the consent agenda would be in order.
I'll move to the consent agenda.
Motion by Soini, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg, to adopt the consent agenda. Any discussion? None, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, none, carries. Alright, fire department requests to join or to get a quote to join the firefighter plan administered through Para. Thanks Brad.
So, apparently, we are a nine-man board, nine-person board, excuse me, operating our funds through transition financial management enrichment, about that. That board is interestingly more difficult to staff. There's usually like three of us, a big part of it, if you're not able to find people that continue to wanna do that, I'm not gonna wanna do this forever. You need to look faster nose and look down the highway if it's available. So, Para has been something that's been available for a number of years now. They had a special plan for firefighters under Para, it's called the statewide volunteer firefighter plan. If we decide to, we could have them administer our plan. I don't know what it would cost, that's the purpose of the analysis, but it would save us, I know, in the six to seven thousand management fees, depending on how much it costs. We don't know if we wanna go this route, but we don't, because we don't have enough information. So, in order to get that information, we need resolution from you agreeing to the analysis. So, that is what I'm asking.
Do you need a formal resolution, or is a motion authorized?
I need a formal resolution.
We don't have a formal resolution in our packet, we don't have that to approve tonight, we could authorize it, and have that.
Once it's ready.
Once it's ready. Certainly to approve at the next meeting. I will say, we did, when we were meeting with Senator Howe, he's a former firefighter, so I just mentioned to him that, you know, we were concerned about the depreciating value of the account and looking at potentially changing management for reasons that you stated. And he shared that he was initially very opposed to Para management, and wanted to keep everything individual. And then, he started looking more and more at how the Para funds compared to many of the other individually managed ones. And he's now a full supporter of transferring everything over there. I shared with him that historically, we've exceeded, or we've overperformed compared to Para, but it's not the case with some other cities that he was looking at. But I just thought I'd share his opinion, as somebody who's very small, local, control-minded, he thought that the Para management would be, it has been good for other cities.
Right. We've been asking at fire schools and whatnot, and other people that don't know and that aren't for Para, I don't own anybody that's been disappointed that they worked that way, so. Is it right, is it wrong, we don't know yet, so.
Right. I'm all in support, I'm also just exploring options here, so, because I've seen the calls that you've made trying to get people to volunteer for that board, and it's getting real tough.
It is.
With that in mind, we don't have a proposed resolution, but a motion to allow the request for a cost analysis would be in order, along with a direction to draft a proposed resolution for us to consider at our next meeting. Unless, do you have a proposed resolution language?
I do not.
Okay.
They may have, I will double check and I'll get to you if they.
For tonight, we'd be looking at a motion as on the action sheet, plus directed into, directive to Brad to work with Tarek on drafting a proposed resolution for us to consider.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Soini, seconded by Brick, as stated on the action sheet, which would allow the Fire Relief Association to request a cost analysis to join the statewide volunteer firefighter plan administered through Para, along with directive to Brad and Tarek to work together to draft a proposed resolution regarding the same for us to consider at our next council meeting. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, none, carries. Thank you. Thank you Brad. Alright, Andy, on the other side of this.
When did we meet? I don't remember, last week, Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, thank you. And we came up with kind of a game plan, I believe you guys have a documentation of what that is, I don't see it in the packet, of what our actual proposal is gonna be. But what I'm looking for are inserts for masks, for our masks, not necessarily helmet, I know it's stated helmet in the packet, but they're actually for our masks to go and fight fire. Some people are requiring bifocals, some are not, and that's kind of brought up a big cost difference. So, that's kind of where we're at now, and we need to propose that we make basically a policy to allow the purchase of glasses, inserts, spectacle inserts in our mask. And we said every two years, they can. I believe that's.
Right. So, just starting at the top, as I understand it, in order to work well with the SCBA masks, you have to have special lens inserts in the masks themselves that follow the same prescription that you'd wear outside of the mask, right?
Correct, yeah, your glasses will not work inside your mask, they don't allow full seal or on the face.
So, because of that, the request was made, it came to policies and procedures, we discussed it, for the city to pay for these special lenses. We believe we'd get some sort of discount if we choose a preferred vendor, like Insight is listed on here. And policies and procedures recommended that we treat it a lot like we would, like the steel-toed boots for public works. And we just say, "Yes, we are willing to do that, it's an equipment, it's necessary to do the job." But that we can make that available every other year as a benefit to the firefighters. The question came up, and then Neil answered the question, it policies and procedures, how this would be paid for, and it would come out of the firefighters, or the fire department's equipment fund, which would then be spread across all the different municipalities and governments that pay into that fund. Recommendation was to adopt the language that's proposed on our action sheet, changing helmet to mask, and then indicating that this would be done every other year. That was the recommendation of the policies and procedures.
So, they'd be replaced every other year, or just depending on if they needed them replaced?
Right, up to every other year.
Okay. Because these are gonna be very specific to one person, right?
Correct.
Because they're, okay. And do you have, do you know roughly how many people this affects right now?
I have three that have gone in and purchased them already, or one that's in the process of, and one additional, so they're total of four.
Okay.
Maybe, do you want us to talk about retroactively reimbursing those that have already purchased? Was that something we discussed in policies and procedures?
We, currently, the city's paying for them, I took it out of our general budget at this point. I was just thinking, maybe I should reach out to Belinda tomorrow, and I come to talk to her about changing that code to our equipment fund, instead of the general budget.
So, without, unless there are any further questions for Andy, a motion would be in order.
I'll make motion to add language and personnel policy to address firefighter mask lenses.
I'll second.
And so, I have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Brick, curious if the motion includes the recommendation that it is up to every two years for purchase? Neil, does your motion include the language every two years?
Two years, yeah.
Alright, so there's a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Brick, to add language in the personnel policies to address firefighter mask lenses, and sponsoring city payment for those up to every two years. Any further discussion on that? Carrying none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, none, carries. Nancy, Andy? Page five. Request came for budget finance, that those budget transfers that we sent through, or that we approved in our budget, all the monies that go to capital improvement funds, things like that, that Belinda be authorized to make those, and then report that she's made those to us, rather than bringing a separate action item for all of those things every year. That would eliminate those actions where we have, you know, it seems like three hundred and fifty different transfers all on one page.
And the reasoning is, it's all going to improve in the budget anyway to do these transfers, so why bring it back again?
This would not include anything not budgeted?
No, only budgeted, yes, budgeted items.
I'll make the motion to eliminate the need to bring budgets and annual transfers to the council for approval, as they've already been through the budget process.
There's a motion by Soini, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen, as stated on the action sheet, to eliminate the need to bring transfers, or budgeted transfers to the council. Any further discussion on this? None, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, none, carries. Great. Moving on, Belinda would like us to close the following funds, to make things a little bit easier on her end, these are all inactive. Tarek, anything else we need to know about that?
Three of them are for TIFs that are now finished and complete, so, and decertified, so the three TIF funds will go away, and then the last one is for a street project that was paid off early. So, yes, it would make things easier if we were just to get rid of these funds.
With that, a motion would be in order, if there's no further discussion on it.
Just one, on like the 2014 project, some of those assessments are deferred until the property is transferred, correct?
Yes.
And then, it'll go into the general at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move to close the following funds within the city's financial system and making them inactive. Can I just say as stated?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright. Motion by Brick, seconded by Hertzberg, to close the funds listed on the action sheet, Fund 272, 273, 275, and 522. And then, just to especially note that the street project, any remaining assessments would be put towards the general fund, as stated on the action sheet. Any further discussion on that? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, none, carries. Great. Page seven. We have applications for three beer licenses, QuickTrip, Corvus Lanes, and Baseball Club, looking for a motion to approve those licenses.
Make the motion to approve the 3-2 on sale beer licenses for Corvus Lanes and Paisville Baseball Club, and the 3-2 off sale beer licenses for QuickTrip.
I have a motion by Soini, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen. Wasn't Baseball Club going to apply for the next step up?
I thought so, yeah.
Yeah, that's the next one.
Next license, the next one.
The wine license.
Forget that I'm here, I'm just gonna go another page. Alright, any further discussion?
Is that the same amount or last year?
Yes, I don't think that increased.
Not in the number, though?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Any further discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, none, carries.
The wine was leading.
Yeah, now we'll get to the wine. This is the second one for the Baseball Club, and for the on sale wine license, this is a new one, so this is on top of the beer license that they applied for.
This is a new one available?
Yep, this is the one that we passed.
First time this year.
It's so they can spell strong.
This doesn't.
What was that done?
It's so they can, it's think the state authorizes for strong.
Yeah, because we didn't have one through the state before we did that.
First year.
I think technically, they could've done it last year, but we couldn't pass everything in time.
Yeah, that was the issue.
Okay. So, with that, motion to approve the on sale wine license for the Baseball Club would be appropriate and in order.
I'll make motion to approve the on sale wine license for Paisville Baseball Club.
Motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini, to approve the on sale wine license for the Paisville Baseball Club. Any further discussion? Carrying none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, none, carries. Great. Now, onto you, sir, for liquor store, full-time assistant manager.
Well, we are ready to move forward in the application process, to start that process through budget, I'm sorry, through the liquor board, and policies and procedures have been recommended that we move forward. We have job descriptions completed and passed, we have questions from other cities that we've compiled to make our own questionnaires, so we are ready to start posting, and you can see the tentative schedule down here as to when we would like to get things rolling. So, we're asking for your blessing tonight on the grade seven, step one, twenty-one sixteen hour, plus benefits for that candidate.
Now, we have an internal application process, do you have any idea if we might get any internal applicants?
Possibly a couple.
Any other questions or comments for Bill on here, otherwise, a motion would be in order.
We don't have a step just a grade, don't we, so far?
Yes. Well, grade, step one.
Step one.
Yeah.
Well, I think it'd be possible if somebody comes in with ten years of experience, we'd bump them up a grade or so.
That'd be nice.
But, you know, I think grade seven is all we know.
Correct, start.
I'll make the motion to approve the full-time liquor store assistant manager job description at a grade seven and start the hiring process for such a position.
There's a motion by Soini, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg, to approve the full-time liquor store assistant manager job description at a grade seven and start the hiring process. Any further discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, none, carries. Councilmember Brick did abstain. Slaying her, oh, potential conflict there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Onto item H, the memorandum of understanding with the police union regarding Juneteenth. The state of Minnesota did formally recognize Juneteenth as a state holiday. Our police contract said that once it was recognized by the state, we would honor it and pay it. The law doesn't go into effect until after the holiday this year. Policies and procedures took a look at it, and I said, "That's just stupid, let's just pay it out." Why? It's a holiday, let's just treat it as such. So, the recommendation from policies and procedures was to go ahead and make that payment, and then, Tarek, looks like you and the union drafted memorandum of understanding to serve that.
Not making a payment, though, we're just considering that to be a official holiday.
Right, so that we pay for.
Oh, yeah.
If we say no, nothing changes, the contract stays the way it is, and it just becomes a pay holiday for police next year instead of this year. I just think that's dumb, let's just do it.
I'll make the motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the city of Paisville and LELS regarding Juneteenth holiday.
Okay. There's a motion by Soini, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick, to approve the memorandum of agreement between the city and LELS regarding Juneteenth. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, none, carries. Thank you. Ron, some hanger release.
Yes, thank you, we have two new licenses up here for here, the one pilot has had a monthly contract, and the other one chose to go with the annual. I think we still have one empty hanger out there, but I do have two people we have on the waiting list, so by next month, I'm sure that will be filled also.
Okay. I will not make a smart remark. So, with that, we have two leases to consider, they appear to be in order, we're looking for a motion to approve those.
I'll move to approve tea hanger lease agreements between city of Paisville and Brian Strandberg for hanger number ten, and Chris Bissner for hanger number fifteen.
There's a motion by Brick, is there a second?
Second.
I have one question on here.
Okay, seconded by Soini, to approve the tea hanger lease agreements between the city of Paisville and Brian Strandberg and Chris Bissner. Any discussion, all?
Yeah, I have the Chris Bissner, hanger fifteen, says one year lease, but it only has a one, one seventy-five times nine. Correct, that is, he's only starting on April first, and the hanger, all contracts that we will have expire on September first. Thanks for clarifying, didn't know.
Okay, I answered it. Okay, I answered it. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Onto our update packet here, item J, the EDAF revolving loan. All right, give us an update.
Yes, EDAF final subcommittee met to approve, or conditionally approved the EDAF loan for WDR, which is Avon Classic, to build a warehousing facility in the township. They're asking for $300,000, EDAF loan, 150 for the township, 150,000 for the city. And they just have an issue with the title on the property that they're looking to acquire. Once that is cleared, they would like to have, or would like to know if the loan is approved or not, so they can proceed quickly. They're not sure how long this title issue would last. So the EDAF committee is recommending that it's approved conditionally upon a clear title. And then, when I pass this on to the city attorney, he advised that this needs to go to a public hearing, and maybe you can add more bill on the requirements for a loan of this size.
Yeah, so, we, I think I've set down a notice of a public hearing on this that you're gonna, you're gonna do, but, so, yeah, we'll do the public hearing, and I'll, I'll probably draft something like a resolution that would get approved at the public hearing, follow the public hearing, authorizing the loan, and then, and then, and then after that, it would just be like, like any other EDA loan, where we would do our mortgage, you know, security agreement, whatever, whatever the collateral is gonna be. I assume we're gonna be behind the bank on real estate, and probably behind the bank on some personal property, which hasn't been defined yet, I don't, I don't know what all the collateral would be.
Yeah, Magnify is doing, most of the financing is around 2.1 or 2.2 million, Magnify is doing.
And there is no property because it's storage.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll just be the building and the land.
Okay. And from what I understood from you, Bill, is that this is a state statute that we can hold a public hearing with, I think, 10 days' notice?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so after the, after the public hearing, you got the resolution, and then we just have to put together the documentation on the loan. I assume, and, and we should get, and I think you told me that the township was going to get us something authorizing the city to hold the public hearing on behalf of both entities.
Yes, they would draft something and give it to, give it to us before the public hearing date.
And we're probably, and I can communicate with you about that, but we're probably gonna want them to do some kind of a resolution indicating that their board also approves their participation in the law. So.
Is this something new, Bill? Because we hadn't done this before.
You know, just, we haven't done it a lot, because we haven't had a lot of loans of this size, but we did it, once we did it on that I could find really easy, we're saving basements in Lewis Industries. Those were the big ones that we did, but most of our loans tend to be, well, like $40,000 or something. It seems like, you know, we get loans that are not insignificant, but they're not big enough to trigger the requirement.
Well, we did, I mean, we learned one for Valley, too.
Yeah.
But I do remember us ever having a hearing and stuff before.
I don't remember that one, but.
No, okay.
Well, the nice thing about having to do a public hearing just gives them time to clear the title issue as well.
Yeah.
If they can clear.
If they can clear, yes.
Otherwise, they're gonna start looking for different land.
Yeah. I think, I mean, it's just nice to be able to hopefully have some clarity on that issue.
Yeah. Hopefully, yeah, I don't, I don't know how that process will go for him, but.
I think we'll move it to speed of lawyers, so.
Right. I, I mean, it sounded like somebody had a lease, I don't, I assume that person with the lease really doesn't want it to go forward, and so it can be cleared up, but if they want to go forward, it's probably not gonna be cleared up.
Right. It's a solar gardens and.
I know, but I mean, so if they're intending to do it, this is probably gonna fall apart on this land.
Yep.
But I'm sure, I'm sure they'll get it done somewhere.
Who, who owns the land right now?
Well, they do, I mean, they don't, no, they don't, Dexter King's already sold it.
Dexter, yes.
Yes. But he also has the lease with the solar gardens, too.
I mean, they're buying the land from Dexter.
Correct.
Okay, because the sheet in the back shows that they already, where is that, yeah?
They've already given Dexter money for the.
Okay, because, because it says page 71, it looks like they already own it.
Well, they thought they did, till they went to file the title. Because they've already paid even for it.
Okay.
Because they're using this land as their down payment with the magnifying, the law.
All right, well, for purposes of tonight, we are just looking at approving Resolution 2023-07, which sets the public hearing and provides for the notice. The proposed notice is on page five of the update. Resolution is on page four, setting the public hearing for April 10, 2023, at 6:15 p.m.
Are they aware that we have to do this hearing, WDR?
I will notify them if I have a head.
Because this is just longer than they want. Yeah. They wanted to get started right away.
Well, the motion approving the public hearing would be in order.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2023-07, setting the public hearing on proposed business subsidy to WDR Properties LLC for Monday, April 10, at 6:15.
Also. Motion by Soini, seconded by Hertzberg, approving Resolution 2023-07. Need further discussion on that? None, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Great, on to the kayak rental, page six, Tark.
Uh, yeah, the EDAF reviewed the kayak rental agreement, had some suggested changes. I spoke with the city attorney, who will help me, you know, do, draft some corrections. And if you look at the update, that's the final version of the agreement with the kayak company, which has also been reviewed by the attorney, and his recommendations were incorporated into this revised agreement. So now we're hoping to get this approved, so we can get started on this.
I have a question for you, Tark.
Yeah.
If two different spots in here shows that there's a 20% revenue share, and a couple of these boxes shows us a 50% revenue share.
Yeah, the 50% revenue share was the original proposed agreement that the kayak company offered to us. Or they would have set the rental rates much higher. And we felt that if we're doing this, you know, to, as a benefit for residents, we want to make it more affordable. And we want to fix the rate at $10 per hour versus 20 or more per hour. And, yeah, that's what the EDAF board was comfortable with, they would rather see higher use than higher revenue on it.
Makes sense.
And Tark, I don't know if you've got a straight answer from them on that, that $16,000, if it got extended for five years, if you'd have to pay that again.
Yeah.
I assume that was the way, the way it was, but.
Yeah, he said, "Once you do that, there's only a one-time fee."
Oh.
And, yeah, that's in the agreement, he said it's a one-time fee, not if you reno, you don't pay that fee again.
Because the, it will already be in place, and the app thing will already be set up and everything.
All right. This is an exciting program. With that, well, what's up?
Something more to enter.
Yes. So with that, we'd be looking to approve the services agreement between the city and Rent.Fun for a four-unit locker in the amount of $16,000, with funds coming from EDAF for a five-year rental term, and a 20% revenue share authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Hertzberg, as stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
All seconded.
Seconded by Soini. Any further discussion of that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, proposed civil abatement hearing, page 64 of our packet, along with the update that Tark provided here in terms of the pictures.
Uh, yeah, I, obviously, we've been discussing this property for quite some time, and I remember how many council meetings back that was, where we assigned Councilmember Thielen to work with the residents there to try to come up with better language, or more suitable language, that will allow for such a vehicle to be displayed on the property. And as far as I know, and maybe Paul, you can update, you've made several attempts to meet, and none, none were successful, or did you have any success in the meeting?
So what we had done was, there's some touching back and forth, so I would have an odd trail of what he said, she said. It's all on the files. I had mentioned to her that if she wanted any sort of actions done, she should come down and help us out with the ordinance. But it was an excuse of more than one, one time, that she had to speak to an attorney first. And asked her, again, if, she's not speaking to the attorney, if she could let us know, so we can hoopla on us and have it heard anything sensible. But I would deal with this stuff since last fall. And I do believe it's well past our time to put this to bed, so if we need to do a civil abatement, then let's do it.
Well, the purpose of this meeting, I guess, is to, obviously, after talking to city attorney, he advised that, well, first we need to make sure that the vehicle is still there, which, it is still there, and then, if we were to set a public hearing, you guys will decide if a public hearing is in order to discuss this matter formally.
Yes, I'm curious, and Bill or Paul, I mean, one of you can chime in on why we would be looking at a civil abatement instead of just issuing the criminal citation like we've discussed in the past.
The reason, my, from my perspective, the reason is that my experience is this thing's going nowhere in court. Judges hate it. People don't show up, they get kicked down the road, you know, because my, my goal, you know, when I have a situation like this, is try to get removed. Filing somebody $50, I mean, you know, that's what's gonna happen, is it's gonna be a $50 fine, and it's not gonna get the vehicle moved. And if, if what you want is to get the vehicle moved, this is what you gotta do. If you want, if you want a $50 fine, we can do it, but we're just gonna end up doing it again, I think. Because that's my opinion. It's not gonna be a result.
All right.
What are the steps of the civil abatement?
Well, so, I mean, we obviously have, I guess, photographs before you. I would suggest the first step would be to probably have Tark send a letter. I drafted a letter in a form, and I could talk to Tark about it tomorrow, but I'd suggest that this could put on a city letterhead, that Tark sign the letter and say, you know, I mean, we could modify the letter to say, "Here's the pictures, there's clearly a vehicle that violates our ordinance." And give her, give some time for that vehicle moved, and then, if the vehicle doesn't get moved, we'd have to, we'd have to set a public hearing, and before the council, and we have to give notice to everybody who's got an interest in the property, so I'd probably have to get an owners and incumbents' report done to see who's on title, who's got a mortgage, I have notice has got to go to everybody, you know, who has an interest in the property, so if there's any mortgage holders, lien holders, whatever, they've gotta get notice at the hearing. So that would be the process. I, my thought was, I'm gonna be, I think I've said this, it's gonna be gone for a while, so, I thought maybe we could send a letter, and Tark could say, "You've got 30 days to clear it up. If you don't clear it up, we're gonna schedule a public hearing. Notice is gonna have to go to everybody with an interest in the property, and it's up to them, I guess, and I have no idea, you know, the reactions of discussions have not been good in the past, so I don't know that sending a letter's gonna get it done, but I think that's the first step we should take, is to set a letter and give some period of time to do it, and then set a public hearing if it doesn't happen.
And then what happened at the public hearing, there are findings?
Yeah, I mean, so normally at the public hearing, you would hear testimony, I suppose, from, probably from, I don't know who took these pictures.
I did.
Yeah. I suppose Tark would tell you what was there, and would confirm that it's still there, and what, you know, what the issues are, why it violates our ordinance. You'd hear the other side, I'm sure, and then you'd have to make findings and issue an order, either that, that find that it doesn't violate your ordinance, or find that it does, and order that it be removed. And, you know, your findings would basically authorize somebody from the city to go remove it, or contract to have it removed. I'm guessing, given the circumstances here, I'm probably gonna be very hesitant to have somebody go on the property without getting an administrative search warrant, authorizing the entry of the property to remove the offending item. I think I'd wanna get a district court judge to sign off on authorizing it done.
So at the end of the day, it's gonna cost a lot of money to accomplish this.
It's gonna cost some money, yeah, I mean, I don't know, everybody's, everybody's, a lot of money is different, but, but, yeah, it's not, it's not, not gonna be free.
No, it's probably thousands of dollars. Have, has, has there been formal neighbor complaints?
No, not formal.
Almost, yes.
Well, maybe, well, not that necessarily they put their name on it, they're scared of the property owner. Yeah, there's repercussions of it.
There's been complaints, but not in writing, or?
Nobody wants to put their name on it, they don't wanna be on Facebook, they don't wanna be harassed.
So, that's been my experience with it as well. Because every time this comes up, I get contacted by a handful of folks who all express their disagreement, but it looks like they're, and nobody's willing to say anything, because they don't want it to be, they don't wanna be the one.
And unfortunately, you know, this has been shoved into the public arena, not through any of our choosing. But, I mean, I, as I've stated before, I don't know, I mean, in the future, if we see, or we get formal complaints or whatever about another broken ordinance, and we go to that person, and we tell them, you know, that this is breaking the ordinance and you need to do this, they're gonna say, "Well, the heck I do," because this has been allowed to go on, and this continues to be allowed to go on. So, I just feel like, you know, I mean, we don't know what the outcome of the civil abatement is going to be, but I feel like, at this point, we're, what we're saying is that not everybody who lives within city limits of Painsville has to follow the same rules. And I don't think that that's fair.
No.
Because there are people who have had to pay to have things removed before, and there are people in the future who will have to abide by the ordinances, and I don't know why.
We can remove it for the ordinance, then, say you can have your vehicles, how do you want?
Rights, yeah.
It was mentioned to you today, that the whole point is, she says, you know, this freedom, like my rights. But the problem is she's incurred in making others not have their rights because of the way it looks, so it's, it's just, oh, I drive by daily.
I don't, you know, for me, it isn't, I, people, you know, they can have their property, I'm not gonna, you know, I know a lot of people bring up all kinds of things. For me, the issue is, there is this vehicle, we have an ordinance against that.
Exactly.
That's it.
And if we let, or get away with it, everybody's sorry.
And there's no, as far as I'm aware, I could be wrong, but as far as I'm aware, there hasn't been an attempt to rectify this in any way. And in fact, it has been moved back onto the property despite. So I just think that it's setting a bad precedent, and I think that we, as well as future councils, are gonna have a very hard time telling anyone else in the city that they need to do something if we're not willing to hold everyone to that same standard.
See, unless it doesn't usually get to this level, usually it just takes, or if you need a chief, or whatever, and they, people usually follow along with this. But right now, it looks like they're trying to use different mechanisms to draw around the ordinance, like it's on a trailer now, and it's a yard ornament.
Doesn't matter.
Now, you look under the Minnesota state statute, if it's a nuisance in the city ordinance, whether it's a nuisance, it's a nuisance. Or you can repair.
Well, no, the RV, that's okay.
As far as, as far as, I'm gonna cut you off, because if we're gonna do a public hearing on it, we get to decide what fits in the ordinance or not. And I don't want Paul to be influencing that decision until that public hearing.
So, if I, like, I was just gonna say, as far as I know, it's good, it's okay. But I also do believe there's another vehicle on that property, that's my question, I told Tark.
Yeah, I didn't take a picture of the backside, the other side.
So, our civil abatement ordinance says that upon the council's own initiative or receipt of a complaint, we can order the investigation of a premises, and if it's found as hazardous condition or nuisance, the city administrator shall prepare a report and. hazardous condition or nuisance, the city administrator shall prepare a report and prepare an notice of hearing. So I think, you know, basically, what we'd be directing TARC to do is, you know, begin the formal process of this. But my personal opinion is that if we're going to be looking at this residence, we have a number of others throughout the town that we also need to be investigating. And if we're directing TARC to draft a formal report for this, then I'd like to see, maybe we don't start that civil abatement process like we're doing tonight, but I'd like to see the report from TARC on, there's the house on Minnesota, there's the one over on, is it Genesee?
Hudson.
Hudson. And there are a couple of others that are problematic. And I, if we're starting this with one, I think we need to do it with all of the ones that have given us pause.
Aren't those under, already under a plan?
But they're not working.
Have they not been?
I would disagree a little bit. The one on Minnesota has, you know, it's gone, it's had its ebbs and flows, but the one on Minnesota has cleaned up quite a bit. One of the residents, as I understand it, that was kind of the main cause, is out of there now, and is no longer living there. Once we get rid of all this, you know, our department will be back going at those that we were working with last fall to continue cleaning up their yards. The issue with this particular property is they just flat out refuse.
Right.
Everybody else is at least listening and making some steps.
I get that, and that's why I think whether or not we choose to have a public hearing on these other ones is a topic for later, but I'd like to see the report from TARC that says, I was directed to look at these addresses, I did, and here's kind of my preliminary drive-by report. And that we can make a determination from there under our ordinance, as I read it, as to whether or not we wanna have a public hearing and continue the process.
I think that once the other properties see that we're constantly moving in motion towards.
Serious?
Yeah, we're serious about this, and they may pay closer attention as they may be next in line.
I will just say that if there is another vehicle, the report should include that. I mean, I don't, I don't want this to be an incomplete report and then start a public hearing and bring up stuff that wasn't in the initial report. I mean, we need to, and so maybe, maybe some little bit more needs to be done, I don't, you know, before we do that. And I was, you know, I guess, I was suggesting, although the ordinance doesn't require it, but I was suggesting that there be a letter setting a deadline before we set the public hearing. It's not required in the ordinance, but I thought at least it would give an opportunity to comply more formally. I mean, we've, we've, I know we've asked before, but I don't think it hurts to do the courtesy of saying, here's the issues, here's the evidence, and give some time to comply. They don't, they don't.
Let me make a proposed motion, and then maybe I'll just make it, is that this property along with others, we've identified the one on Minnesota, I think is the most obvious, TARC can take a look at them, and if he believes there's a problem, we authorize him to send that corrective letter, and then if it's not corrected by thirty days, then he does the draft of the formal report, and we determine whether or not we should set a hearing.
Well, it could be on more than one property.
Yeah, more than one.
Okay.
In a third of these, well, I mean, being generous too, they've got plenty of time to work on this.
Well, I mean, with this.
Yeah. Well, I think as long as, if TARC, when he does that, if he can talk to, I guess, the chief would be the one who's already focused on this property, to see what the goals have already been, if they've been set or whatever.
I think absolutely that needs to be part of what comes back to us in a month, but I am not, the chief and I have talked about concerns a resident had about the Minnesota property. It's something that routinely gets brought up, that whether or not progress is being made, there are some people with same concerns as there are in spirit, that not enough's being done and not enough's being accomplished. So I would just think that if we're going after, if we're looking at one as being the problem, we need to look at all of the other ones.
Okay.
And maybe that means there is enough runners, maybe we don't set the public hearing, but we at least need to have things on our radar.
Sure.
Neil?
Our current ordinance, as long as the vehicle is licensed and operational, they consider all written, if you install on it, that's, that's okay, correct?
Correct.
Because I've had people complain to me that my neighbor's got four cars, and only's only using one. Well, if they're all licensed and operational, it's still okay.
Yeah.
It's his yard, he wants to fill one with operational cars. It's okay, I agree.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, given that there was, with this particular property, there was the instance where, you know, the item that breaks the ordinance was removed for a short amount of time to avoid the fine that had been put in place already and then brought back, I think that, you know, the thirty days is fine, as long as perhaps you can come up with some language where, you know, if you move it to avoid the hearing, but then a few weeks later, a month later, or whatever, it's back, then we're not going to, there's not gonna be any more grace periods, we're just going to go to the set at public hearing.
Well.
For this property or any others that we decide need to be dealt with. As in the ordinance, not just because we don't like them.
I'm just gonna pull this to an end. I'm going to make a motion that the city administrator contact the property owner for his property listed here in our action sheet, along with, at 1005 Sterns Avenue, Painesville, along with any other addresses that a council member may bring to the city administrator's attention. Do that by Friday of this week, and he will contact them, give them thirty days to clean up whatever nuisance may be there, that in his determination exists, and that he report back at our April twenty-fourth council meeting, so that we can determine whether a public hearing should be set at that point.
Who'd be wasting our time on that? We've already done that.
Well, let me just say, is there a second to the motion, and then I'll call for some discussion.
One second.
Okay, so, I made the motion to direct the city administrator to follow up with the property owner at 1005, along with any other addresses he receives by Friday. And we'll be back April twenty-fourth. Megan seconded that motion. Paul, I know you have some comments.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna be wasting our time, we've been doing this since last fall. And it's just gonna be another excuse to keep kicking the can down the road, and keep talking this over and over, and using a lot of our time, where we just need to tackle head-on, get it done, get it over with. Otherwise, she's just gonna keep doing this, and keep working her, her wizzer out, complaining her different story to each one of the council members here, and to the chief and everyone else. So we're not gonna get anywhere, we're just putting it on ice right now, unless we do something. It's gotta be a hard decision.
So one thing that I would recommend, if we're looking at doing a public hearing, is going back to the training that we did on zoning ordinances and things like that with public hearing. You know, it was recommended in there that when we do public hearings, we're acting quasi-judicially. So if we are contacted by residents or by any of these property owners, anyone about this, then we simply direct them to bring their comments to the public hearing, because we cannot be having these sort of ex parte, out-of-hearing communications with them. So, and that's just something to make sure that we have a solid record. So if we're doing this public hearing, we need to be doing it on the record, have a public hearing. Neil?
I kinda like this letter thing though. Yes, it kicks the can thirty days, but we're showing that they're not being singled out for taking four or five properties, they're all getting the same general letter, that they have thirty days to address the problem. So I guess I weigh that part.
I also like the fact that, Neil, you said you're going to be gone for a while. Gives us more time there, plus, there's only so much that can be done until eight feet of snow melts.
Yeah.
So I, I agree with you, Paul. Again, I do. I just think that as a practical course of action, this is probably the best.
Well, I think it just shows that we're, you know, because I don't think anyone, there's been so much talk about this being like a malicious action, or, you know, it isn't, it is, it's not targeted, it's not malicious, it's not, it's just that, you know, there are people who need to follow the same rules as everyone else. And I think that the thirty days will show them that we are giving them every opportunity to do so. Whether they choose to do it or not is up to them, but.
The other thing I would just, I mean, you dug about potentially multiple properties, I don't think you're gonna wanna conduct these public hearings all in one night, it would be exhausting.
Yeah. It's gonna be all day event. No, Reese can bring popcorn.
I was just gonna say that when you made the motion to clarify that it's a letter, you said just have TARC contact.
In my objection, this is more frustration than anything.
I, I don't disagree, I do think that this has gone on, and this has been going on since.
Years.
When did we last talk about it as council, when I was sitting at Paul's spot? Was that what, twenty eighteen?
I would say it's at least three years.
Yeah. So I, Paul, if there were a practical way to do it immediately, I'd say yes, but I don't, I don't think that there is, so.
Okay.
Give it a chance to cure. I'm gonna call a question then on the motion of directing the city administrator to contact, preferably in writing, property owners at 1005 Sterns, along with any other addresses he receives by Friday, for us to consider at our April, I don't remember, the second meeting in April.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, thank you. So call out a question on that. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Very simple. Okay. Paul? Need a new car?
Need two cars, actually, but.
Start with one.
We got a picture of one right here. So as many of you guys know, we did have an unfortunate accident here about a week ago, one of our squad cars took a pole head-on. The officer is okay, the car is not. In my conversations with the insurance adjuster, he will be totaling out the vehicle, that puts us down to two squads. Unfortunately, the two squads are our two older, our oldest squads that were actually slated to be replaced anyways. I have reached out to anybody and everybody that I can think of with state contracts, Yarmen Ford, and there just are not squad cars to be had really anywhere. One of the outfitters in the area, Guardian Fleet Supply, I believe they purchase vehicles with the anticipation of being able to sell them to their clients and law enforcement when these types of situations come up. They just received two Dodge Durangos in last week, I think it was, that are in their possession that are not called for. I asked them to provide me a quote, and I believe in the packet there is, is the quote, so we're looking at about fifty-eight thousand dollars for that car. In conversation with the insurance adjuster and what our coverage is, we will see one of three things for the squad car that was totaled. We will either get two hundred percent of the value of that vehicle, we will get the value of a replacement vehicle, which in this case, I think comes down to, what, right around forty-five thousand, or forty-eight thousand, which was a replacement cost listed on the insurance policy. It'll be whichever is the least of those three options. So based on my initial conversations with him, I wasn't able to get ahold of him today. We're probably looking at a minimum of forty-five thousand dollars for the vehicle itself, that doesn't include the equipment and everything else that will need to be transferred, that will transfer, that will have to buy new, and everything else. So as much as I would like to look at other options, Guardian Fleet Supply really right now is the only option. Talking with the Ford dealers, Jesse said he had bought three, a blue one, a gray one, and a white one that are up for auction from somebody. So there's no guarantees on what that's gonna look like, and even if we win those, other than that, Fords are pretty much nonexistent as far as when they're gonna be available. Chevys are nonexistent, things aren't sounding good for Topos, so this is kind of the only option, you know, at this point that we have. It sounds like we should be able to get this squad up and running within probably a few weeks. So we back to, you know, our normal squad capacity here within, probably within a month, I'd say, just hedging our bets. Did talk with our mechanic today, and he is highly recommending that that Tahoe go bye-bye quickly. So my goal is to hopefully have some stuff put together for budget and finance for the replacement of what would be the eighteen, but ultimately replace the tall Tahoe, which was slated for this year anyways, so.
I'll just add, we're a quick budget and finance talk about this, and the thought is, one of two things is going to happen with the one that was wrecked, it's either going to be totaled or it will be repaired. Can't imagine a world where it will be repaired, but even if it is, then we're replacing the twenty-eighteen, which we were scheduled to do this year anyway. So we're really in no worse shape. The only thing is, we need to be cognizant as we look at replacing both of these in the future, because now they will be purchased in the same year.
And I will be perfectly honest with you, I think the conversation at budget and finance is probably going to be, we need to put in an order, and we may see that in twenty-twenty-four. Unless something, you know, pops up this year, you know, whether it be with Guardian or Yarmen or somebody else where we actually find one, I think we're probably into twenty-four before we actually see that other car.
Those are Yarmen's, the option, are they used or new?
It's my understanding that they might be from Detroit, like from Detroit PD, that they just decided they didn't want, so it sounds like they're brand new.
A part of me prefers to stay with the Explorer Interceptors because of the equipment transfer.
The problem is, is for the amount of time that we're running our squads anyways, Ford's changing their body style, so it doesn't matter. So they're changing their body style every, well, what'd they say, like two to four years, something like that, so by the time we cycle through a car, that equipment's not gonna transfer over. I have my own thoughts on why that is, but.
Yes.
Well, the other thing that we noted in budget and finance is, council votes to approve this, you know, we do have the language in the action sheet, which is noting that we were unable to get multiple quotes due to market conditions, and that moving forward on this sort of as an emergency basis to replace what's been totaled, where we're down to one good squad and one, one that's got a foot and a grave from the other on a banana peel.
Difficult.
Here's the other thing, just so you know, I mean, it's possible, Neil, that those squads would go less than forty-five, but the base price on those is starting around this price. The Fords took a absolutely drastic jump, where they used to be down in the mid-thirties, and they increased significantly for their twenty-twenty-three models, so I'm not even sure, even if we waited to see if we could grab one of those, while we're dealing with a vehicle that's now a different color. I understand why, and don't get me wrong, Dodge was not my first choice.
Or second.
Unfortunately, Chevy isn't available. I think the Topos give us our best bet, but I don't know that those will be made or when they'll be made, so. You know, I think to keep more continuity as far as the color and the look within the department, you know, it's our best, it's our best option right now.
Have you talked to departments that have the Dodge?
I have not, I've just talked with the outfitters, and, you know, I know, I think it's, I believe State Patrol, I think, is going to the Durangos now, so. I don't wanna say if they're going to them, it's okay, but.
Because they were on Charger, and now the Charger's going away, I think they're with Durango.
I know they were running the Fords for a while, and they're backing away from the Fords, you know. I will say this, I think this gives us an opportunity going with the Dodge to see whether or not the Dodge is a better fit than the Ford is. You know, if, if it turns out to be a better vehicle than what we're seeing with the Fords, then maybe we move in that direction and move towards Dodge.
Go a little like that.
A smile from here to... Smiling from ear to ear.
This license plate racket, I'm a little interested.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and upfitting of the 2023 Dodge Durango from Guardian Fleet Supply, and the stripping of the crashed 2024 interceptor, interceptor, taking into consideration this is an emergency situation, and given the current market conditions, only one vehicle was in the whole team.
Motion by Soini is taken on the action sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? Just noting again, from the minutes in the record, that due to market conditions and the timing, this is an emergency situation, so we're working with all that we can here. Call out a question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Fair enough. All right. Chief, can you talk to us about a potential township contract?
Okay, I'm sorry for not getting that on here. I know we talked about it this morning, and I just don't remember which one of the two meetings we discussed it. So, what's that?
Department head meeting.
Yeah, I know, but I don't remember if that was before or after we met.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So I'll take responsibility on that one. So Police and, the Police and Fire Advisory Board has been in discussions about, you know, the Paintsville Township contract, and, you know, what services the department's currently providing to the township, or, you know, just in general, out in the township, and the desire to really get something more formalized and have the city be compensated for the work that's being done. So we've drawn up, and we had no draw up, or actually, what, about a month ago, when we spoke with the township board, they said they were at least interested in having a discussion at their monthly, or at their annual township meeting. So we had built out a big contract for it. That contract basically states that the police department will provide proactive traffic enforcement and patrol only, meaning we will be out, we will be seen out in the township doing proactive traffic enforcement. In turn, that will provide them some visibility with patrol, you know, around their neighborhoods and around the areas where they have, have some of those issues. That contract would be for a fee of essentially $50,000. That particular fee covers, on average, three hours of traffic enforcement a day, as well...
$50,000 per year.
Yeah, $50,000 per year, as well as $10,000 towards squad replacement and maintenance due to the increased number of miles that are going to be driven on those squad cars. Currently, right now, based on the numbers the department is providing, basically, it's like 60 to 70% of the traffic enforcement that happens out there is being done by the police department right now. Usually, that's happening, you know, potentially on the highway, or it's happening when guys are going out to, you know, say, the, the compo site or Don't Ections Park. The plan is to take that contract to council, so approves or wishes to the township meeting tomorrow night, to present, to the residents, and quite honestly, to get an answer, you know, one way or the other, you know, whether or not they actually want our services out there or not. But ultimately, you know, the city shouldn't be paying to provide services out there that ultimately they chose to initially say they don't want to go back to the sheriff's office, so.
Is it a one-year contract or longer?
I believe it's set up as a reoccurring one, right, though? So it's a one-year contract, but it won't continue?
It was, I mean, I put in there that it was terminable on, I don't know if it's 30 days' notice, or either party could terminate it, you know, if they want to, but, so it's kind of not like a binding thing. I assume not adding personnel or squad cars because of it, but we'd be, you know, not hiring an extra officer because of the commitment.
Well, the odds might change over a couple, three years.
Certainly, yeah.
And I think at this point, you know, when I looked at that price, we averaged it three hours based on the average rate of pay. I don't know that we want to do anything more than a one-year contract at this point. You know, let's see how it goes. I have some concerns. You know, more on the side of reeling people in and making sure that they understand that proactive enforcement out in the township is not the primary focus. We will do that, and we will have that, but we still are responsible to this community and the safety of town, not just the traffic outlet, where you can drive 55 miles an hour.
Yeah, well, let's see how it goes, and maybe it will lead to a more comprehensive agreement down the road. We don't know yet.
Correct.
So for purposes of tonight, and the original goal was to have the contract and the update, so we could all see it, but basically looking for authorization from the council to present the $50,000 per year offer for purposes of doing proactive traffic enforcement. And then assuming that the township goes along with it, then we bring the formal contract back here for final, let's face it, there they go. So, we, Chief and I were just talking earlier about how it's ironic we see the sheriff out here more now than we're talking about contracting with the township than we did before.
Surprised that happened before.
So, yeah, I guess we'll be looking for a motion to approve the presentation of a contract for $50,000 to the township, and then if the township doesn't want to do that, I would say that the Police and Fire Advisory Board needs to have some discussions about what ongoing response looks like.
And I would agree 100%.
Yeah. Because we are spending a lot of time and money out in an area where people, our citizens of the city incur the cost, but not those who are benefiting.
Personnel wise, are you okay, and how will that affect?
So with this being a strictly proactive traffic enforcement, nothing will change. We're not incurring any additional call volume. This is something the guys are going to do within the normal course of their, their shift, so.
Because 50 wouldn't cover adding another man or squad.
It's, it's not, we're working through some different things. You know, personnel-wise, we've got, one of our part-timers has some issues that have come up, that most likely they'll be resigning soon. So we're, we're in the process of working through those to see what's going to happen. But as of right now with this, this is just going to be something that happens in the normal course of their day.
Is somebody willing to make a motion to approve presenting the township with the proposal?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, there's a motion by Soini approving the presentation of a contract for traffic enforcement in the amount of $50,000 to Paintsville Township.
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Fair enough. All right. On to old business A on the update, page 14, the Denmark trip. It's no secret, my wife has epilepsy. With the way her seizures and stuff have been over the last couple of weeks, I had been concerned about going to Denmark, and then she had kind of an alarming seizure on Thursday during the environmental meeting, and I just, I made the decision that I can't go. I can't do it. I have to put my family first and make sure that they're okay. She also has a meeting with her neurologist the week that we would be gone, and since we're going to be discussing potential surgical options, I, I just can't do it. So I called, I talked to Tarek and Paul about options. We can cancel my ticket and get most of it refunded. There's 250, or $300 cancellation fee. I indicated that I would be willing to reimburse the city for that fee, but I think the greater concern is scheduling. Neil said he'd be willing to go, but it's scheduling, Neil's flight, and then the added cost, given the timing of purchasing those tickets. So, did I miss anything? I guess...
No, Paul was able to match the flights. However, there is an extra cost to the ticket, so if you guys have authorized it, we can go ahead and do that.
What, what was the final amount?
$1,700.
Compared to the nine-something?
Yeah, almost $1,000. So it's...
$970, you corrected me.
$970, yes. No, it's up a little bit, well, a lot, but we were able to at least match. And actually, that's surprising what the, it's like $12 higher than the, the cheapest ticket. That would be close anyways, so.
Neil, are we going to be able to get your passport? Like, oh, better yet. Well, we already seen this is a good tour.
And obviously, I'm also looking forward to Chuck giving me news that he's going to be joining us as well.
That's what happened.
Since you're the colleague at Voltenam and can't make it, so I hope that you let us know.
Yeah, I'll be looking at my schedule here in the next couple of days.
At this point, we're just going to see what shows up off the plane. We've changed so many times.
Oh, yeah, hopefully Chuck will join us as well.
Tarek, I'm an engineer on the plane, just to...
Just start with, yeah, you know.
Father-in-law's an engineer. I'm sure he'd love to go with him. I know he's, he's got nothing better to do, so.
That's true.
He called back from Texas earlier, though. I see the added cost. I mean, it's unfortunate that we weren't able to get in at the same price, but in the long run, it's a drop in the pocket compared to the tax coming in that this could break in. So I, EDAP is flush with monies.
Yeah.
That's what's paying for it.
Sometimes life situations have a lot of control.
It was a better choice.
Yeah, we need to be able to live with more power to you.
I said, I'm not going to sleep if I go over there, so.
No, you won't.
Do it this way.
You weren't going to sleep anyway, isn't that the main principle? Do it here where she needs you.
So I guess with that, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the, motion to approve sending council member Hertzberg to Denmark at the added cost of about $1,700.
Yeah. I will make that motion.
There's a motion by Soini to approve sending council member Hertzberg to Denmark. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Be opposed? None? Fair enough.
Sean, do you guys want to address your lodging as well? Nothing has been done at that. Who's that again?
The landlord.
So you said that Nature Energy was going to book everything, right?
They're, they're going to book everything except for the last couple of days we're there, where we're off of their program, but they're not paying for anything. They're just making the arrangements. So Paul and I looked at the prices. We kind of have an estimate of what they would be.
And they had like two that they were recommending, wasn't that correct?
Well, one is when we initially get there, and the other one is in the smaller town where we'll be going through.
Right. Oh. Just go with what they're planning, because they know what's the best place to go.
Yeah.
I think that's...
The issue of what Tarek's talking about is the last couple nights.
In Copenhagen.
And then in Copenhagen, and then, and then the overnight in Amsterdam on the way home.
It's wrong with the airport. I can glimpse the visitors from your eyes, Neil.
Whatever people decide.
It's ea, it's easy to say now, but it's not a goal.
Yeah, but Chuck's sitting right next to you, but he needs to know where you're sitting.
No, I think for Copenhagen and Amsterdam, the prices were about the same, around $200 or something like that. It's $205.
Yeah, so generally, what we've figured, and what Tarek and I figured, based on what we believe are the hotels that Nature Energy is proposing, is for the entire week, the city's looking at about $3,000 for lodging costs, so about $1,000 per person.
Because that's including the, that's just Copenhagen.
No, that's everything. That's, that's all lodging.
So now if they make a motion approving lodging costs up to $3,500, it would probably be in order.
Yeah.
Probably.
Somebody willing to make a motion authorizing up to $3,500 total for lodging costs coming out of the EDAP fund?
So would.
Okay, there's a motion by Thielen. Authorize the lodging costs up to $3,500 from EDAP. Is there a second?
I suppose there would be a second.
Seconded by Soini. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Be opposed? None? Fair enough. All right.
Thielen.
Okay, so with that, we have our Sterns County Services Public Hearing Notice on page 69. Neil was talking about that earlier. Not sure if that will go forward, now that we're running into a title issue, but I guess that's not necessarily our problem. Notice of penalty compliance, where we passed. MediaCom is raising their rates again, and we have our Police Department Board reports starting on page 76. There being further business, we are adjourned.
Neil, too late, I don't mind you for that one.